Stand in session, roll call please. I'm not here asking you to stop growth.
A member of my family was killed with a gun. It can happen, and it does, and it was an accident.
I implore you to vote against these fares and cutting services.
I passes five to two.
A lot can happen in a day. We'll make sure you don't miss a thing.
We are back. We had a closed session and an administrative function session. And we are now back to the regular agenda. Starting with, there are no changes to this evening's agenda as it's posted. And just a couple items to point out about a couple future agendas going forward in the next month. Next Monday, October 28th, we have work session discussion with the Nuclear Free Committee. They're providing an update. And also, a little discussion on the City Manager's Quarterly Activities Report and Financial Report. The following Monday, November 4th, is the night before the city elections, so that there will be no council meeting. And then Tuesday, November 5th, is Election Day. The following Monday, November 11th, is Veterans Day, so city offices will be closed for the holiday. And the next day, Tuesday, November 12th, is likely to be a council retreat. So then the following Monday, November 18th, is the date for the swearing-in of the new city council. And that's as far as I'll take agendas going forward in the next month. I don't have anything for the record, so at this point, we will move to public comments. And that'll be a chance for anybody to talk about anything that's not on our special session items, the first three items on this evening's agenda. So if anybody wants to talk about work session item or anything not on the agenda, now's the time to do so. Please identify yourself and please keep your comments to three minutes. Are there any comments?
(Inaudible)
Hold on, Pat.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Angie Cruz, the Business and Community Development Coordinator for Washington Avenish University. The university recently applied for the 2015 Community Development Block Grant, which is designed to fund activities primarily to benefit the low and moderate income residents of Tacoma Park. The program that we are seeking funding for is for a free summer performing arts camp. The objective for our program is to keep students intellectually stimulated during the summer months and increase their knowledge and understanding of the performing arts. During the camp, students will receive musical ear training, private and group vocal lessons, introduction to a variety of instruments, theatrical rhetoric, theatrical dance, and music theory and history. We've had several conversations with Tacoma Park Elementary and Tacoma Park Middle School along with council member Jared Smith about the program and ensuring that we're serving the students that are high-risk and most economically disadvantaged. We appreciate the opportunity to be considered for the 2015 Community Development Block Grant and hope you consider supporting the free performing arts summer camp for 2015. And just to speak casually, Washington Avenish University did receive a 2014 grant from Montgomery County, and that's the reason we're able to actually do this this coming summer. So we're excited about it, we're committed to it, and we really hope we can get support for 2015 because we'd like to do it each summer and eventually create a sustainable program for the summer and to serve underserved students in our area, specifically our neighborhood. And so we're excited about it, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Rue McKenzie. Two weeks in a row, I'm back to address the council. And it is our delight for Washington Avenish University to partner with the university, as a matter of fact, with the city. As a matter of fact, we make it a priority to want to reach out into the community and to have an impact in the community. And as you're aware, today's youngsters are challenged with information overload. And unfortunately, much of the information is not good information. And we also have learned over the years that our children come down with multiple intelligences, and some students do not do particularly well at academic work, but they are still very, very intelligent and very brilliant. Our attempt for the coming summer will be to expose them, to another part of them that we hope they will find to be their intelligence. And usually, when they become successful at something, it triggers their success into other areas. So we look forward to this partnership and this funding and hope that we will be able to continue to expand this. A taste of the academics in the arts, so to speak, may just inspire some of them to go beyond low dreams to high dreams, where they will not only consider going to high school, but they will consider going to college, undertaking careers that will benefit their local and international community. We've been happy to work with Councilman Jared Smith as we look forward to this kind of a funding for our young people in the community. And who knows? These very ones that we train may be the ones who will come back and serenade us when we need it the most. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jim DiLuigi, 7106 13th Avenue, Tacoma Park. I was here last week and here again to speak again about the Tacoma Metro Development. I simply ask you to do one thing, and that is to oppose, specifically oppose the design, not the project, oppose the design as currently shown, and provide the opportunity to explore alternatives for the development of that site. I'm an architect. I've been involved in development of various types. I am certain there are better alternatives to what's being shown. And it is critical at this point in time that you express your opinion so that an opportunity is provided to explore alternatives. Should the approval be given to the current developer to go ahead, it's my opinion that there will not be an opportunity to explore designs of a significant magnitude. That, I have that opinion because I've seen iterations of the current design brought forward over and over and over again, and they're essentially the same thing, and oftentimes they're worse. So please, again, very simply, oppose the design as currently shown. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Green, and I represent those people who live in the District of Columbia on Eastern Avenue, next to this metro station. And I was here, you know, we, some of you are familiar faces, in the year 2002, we were here talking about this project. A lot of us spent a lot of time and a lot of hard work on it. And I'm reiterating what Jim DiLuigi said. You need to please include some very simple language that says you oppose the project as you see it right now. I'm really sorry I can't support this project because those of you are, those of you who may have read about it, we asked a group of us, and they were people from DC and Maryland, and we looked at this site and we said, hey, here you have a surface parking lot. Instead of spreading all of these townhouses with private two-car garages all over this site and basically concreting the whole thing up, please put a well-designed project on the surface parking lot. But I can tell you, we never said, oh, please put 180,000 square feet, up to seven stories, looming over Eastern Avenue in the parking lot. We never said that. We never would have said it. It makes no sense. It's not something that is a community-oriented, neighbor-friendly project. And so, truly, I think this is probably your best and maybe only opportunity to get a project there that really is an asset to both of our communities. And I say this because I was at the public hearing, the compact hearing, which is WAMADA's public hearing. So they had a compact hearing on the townhouse proposal. And what they're saying is, don't worry about the problems with this project because you can fix it. And the compact hearing is the right time for the city and everybody else to fix a bad project. Well, here's what happened in 2002. It was a very bad project. We were all agreed it was a bad project. You were, I was, there were 60 or 70 people who came out to the compact hearing. It was packed. They never get that kind of number. Everybody, except three, two or three people, opposed this project. Everybody did. Two or three people, they all opposed it. And the city of Tacoma Park had wonderful testimony, I thought compelling testimony, opposing it. Didn't matter. When the WAMADA board looked at the hearing, they said, oh, okay, we can do it. And they didn't make a single change, even though, as I said, like 95% of those people, roughly, you know, who had come out, opposed it. So this is the opportunity that you have to fix this thing. And to wait until later on in the process is really, it's really not going to work based on what we've seen, based on how we've seen the WAMADA board respond. So again, I'm sorry I can't support it, but I hope that you can adopt a very intelligent and firm resolution that explains why it is a bad idea and asks the WAMADA board, please, Tacoma Park, Maryland opposes this project at this point. Thank you. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you.
My name's Lorraine Piersson, Vice President of Historic Tacoma, and I certainly agree with Jim and with Sarah's testimony. And I'm here to also say a very, very important thing for you to do with this is to request a delay of the WAMADA board vote on November 21st. It's a very important kind of benchmark where all of this development right is being handed from the public to the private sector. And it's a very, very serious moment. And I think that you, as a Maryland entity, have a right to demand that WAMADA, before it does that, works out, reaches out to work with you to resolve so many of the serious problems that were raised. And we've gone into it, the size, the massing, the everything, the loss of green space. It is very, very important that you ask for a delay in that WAMADA vote transferring that development right on November 21st so we can work together with them. I want to say a word about the green space and how really critically important it is. And when I go back over the records and review what happened, it is very, very clear that in 1974, when the WAMADA board started talking about it, and 1973, I actually believe, late '73, it was, it was really an amenity for the people who lived there. There had been litigation in 1973, just before this. And, you know, WAMADA was told to be neighborhood-friendly. And putting in that buffer there, when you start to look at it with those eyes, you realize that it is very fair to consider this an amenity to the people who live there. And just think about what they gave up. That was a beautiful neighborhood. It had trees all over the place that WAMADA cut down. There were houses that were torn down. Instead, what was done to this beautiful little neighborhood was tons of buses, lots of concrete, noise, pollution, visual assaults, and the amenity was the green space. We imagine if you lived there and they came during this whole thing and they were now telling you, well, we're taking away an amenity that we gave you back then because, you know, to kind of deal with this, to help, you know, you deal with this, that is the wrong thing to do. We really must fight for that entire green space. And I would even argue enlarging it with landscaping because of the grand plans to add more bus bays. And I think it's very scary to think of us serving Walter Reed, and there are lots of hard questions to ask our representatives on this. So please, please, vote to oppose this as it is and ask for a serious delay in the board vote to, so you can work with your Maryland WAMADA representatives to protect Maryland. That's what you're doing right now. That's your job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lovelace.
Hello. My name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, Ward 4, your official peace delegate. One thing I wanted to ask you people is, do you know what 15 more days is? 15 more days is how many days you've got left before Election Day, before you vote. And I'd like to see as many people out there as I can. Also, early voting starts, I believe, on October 30th. And I think if people can't get out there on days like Election Day, they can come out to the early voting. And I'd love to see people out there voting. I want to see a big turnout this year. You know, you want to work for peace, you would like the way Tacoma Park is. We thank our mayor and our city council for that. Our city council and stuff is upholding the torch from what Sam Abbott and everybody else passed down over the years. So we can't live in the past, but we can continue on marching into the future. And remember, we can do it. And also, ask, ask if there's going to be any Halloween party or any parades coming up this year so the kids can take part in that instead of that dangerous habit of trick-or-treating. But they must go trick-or-treating. Please, make sure there's an adult or two with them. And make sure that they, they have, going in groups, they should not go as one. Make sure the children go in groups. And not to eat any of that stuff in them bags until you check it out with your families. Your parents and your teachers, whoever you're staying with, should check them out. Yes, they should. I don't know if they, if we, if they can do it here or not, but one place, when I was in my twenties, went to hospital with x-raying the candies to make sure that there was no razor blades or anything in them or glass or anything foreign. So please, make sure your kids know this and make sure that they can get to a party if they want to. I think that'd be the safest bet. Make sure they don't take rides from anybody that they don't know. Please, I care about the children. They're our future leaders. That is really what peacemaking is all about. Growing up, given the chance, we gave the kids a chance to grow up. We grew up, and we must pass it on down to our next kids. We got to grow, we gave them a chance, and now it's our turn to pass that on down. And as peacemakers and stuff, we got to realize, they're our future leaders. How we treat them is going to be how they're going to grow up later on. And also, learn about your candidates when it comes to voting time, please. Just don't vote for somebody because he's new or because he's pretty or because he's whatever. Vote on your conscience. Check your candidates out, the ones who already done the job really well, and also the ones that are going to say that they can do it well. We got to find out. So please, register the vote, come on down and vote. I'll be down there with the peace sign all day. And if I can do stuff like that, there's no excuse why you can't. You want to help me out, then come out and vote, vote, vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I hope so.
Seeing none, we'll move along to council comments. Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, everyone. Glad to see you here. This is a subject I want to get started with and to find out what needs to be done. I'm really probably directing this to the city manager and the mayor. I may have, I may have tomatoes thrown at me, but that's okay. I've had several constituents come to me because they know how much I preach shop locally. You can buy anything you want to buy in Tacoma Park, any gift, you can buy it in Tacoma Park, or maybe just kind of like across the line there, Maple and Laurel. Spend your, you know, that I, spend your dollars in Tacoma Park. They pointed it out that we don't make it easy because unlike our Bay Harbor neighbor, Silver Spring, we charge for Saturday parking. And it's, well, I think it's a quarter for an hour, which is not as much as they charge, but they don't charge Park, or maybe just kind of like across the line there, Maple and Laurel. Spend your, you know, that I, spend your dollars in Tacoma Park. They pointed it out that we don't make it easy because unlike our Bayheim neighborhood, Silver Spring, we charge for Saturday parking. And it's, well, I think it's a quarter for an hour, which is not as much as they charge, but they don't charge anything on Saturday. Just food for thought, consider us, let's us dropping Saturday parking charges as an incentive to get people to shop in our unique city. I'll figure out what I have to do to get it on the agenda, to do resolutions or whatever has to happen, and we'll rock and roll from there. Thank you, Washington Adventist University, for being here for two weeks in a row and speaking to us. This is really refreshing because I, in the two years I've been here, I don't think we've actually had this kind of connection. And, you know, I want you to keep on coming back. Save the date, Wednesday, October twenty-third, that would be the day after tomorrow. From seven-thirty to nine, our very own Bill Brown is going to be here with The Voice and the Voice Candidates Forum. Yahoo. It's scary to say Yahoo anymore because you think you might be talking about some kind of a lisser, but Yahoo. Bill always asks very provocative questions, and I think one of the things he's going to ask this time is, "What do we want Tacoma Park to look like in 2025?" I'm like, in my mind, I'm with the, you know, something real modern and little, little thingies zooming all over the place. Saturday, October the twenty-sixth, that would be this Saturday. A new Halloween experience, a whole change on the Halloween deal, the Monster Bash, starting at the City Lot right next to the Co-op for costume judging, and then the march to Old Tacoma. It's a reverse march to Old Tacoma to award the prizes and have the party. So, it's a new, going to be a really new experience, and I happen to know who one of the judges is. So, if you have kids and you want to win, make sure you can bring some cookies to someone who may be wearing a hat like this. I'm kidding, just kidding. I cannot be coerced into voting for a certain child, maybe. Tuesday, November the fifth, I'm with Pat. Election Day. I know we don't have a whole lot of us running, but it's really important that you cast your vote. And we have, I think, as he said, early voting starts on the thirtieth and runs right up to the day of. If you are sixteen years or older or a parolee, you can register to vote if you have the right credentials on the day of the election. So, just remember that's really important. Let's see. Aha, what you've all been waiting for, gold stars. Only one huge gold star tonight, for the Friends of the Tacoma Park, Maryland Library, for hosting a fall book sale extraordinaire. They made the largest amount of money ever for their fundraiser. But wait, how did that happen? It happened because the city of Tacoma Park was willing to get off its very limited storage space so that they could bring more books in. There's always been that cutoff point, like three weeks in front, we can't take any more books. Well, this year, they could take them pretty much up to the very bitter end. So, thank you, Friends of the Tacoma Park, Maryland Library and the city of Tacoma Park, for making this a successful, very successful fundraiser. That's it from my side of the mountain.
Councilmember Mail.
Yeah, just a quick comment on an idea that came up from constituents, and it's the idea of having a community-wide yard sale on some unidentified date in the future. The idea being that the city would announce someplace like The Washington Post or other area newspapers, The Gazette, and otherwise publicize that on some Saturday or Sunday in a month with good weather, people all through the city would be having a yard sale. So much like our Porch Fest, had a map that showed dots on a map that you could go and listen to music. You'd have a map that showed dots where people were getting rid of stuff. We have lots of yard sales in the community right now. We have yard sales even written into city policy. But doing something like that might facilitate a whole lot of people getting out and getting rid of stuff on the same day. It's a sort of a celebration of the whole recycle and recycle movement. But it actually came up in a discussion about community building and the ways to get people to interact more and just be out and interacting with neighbors. Seems to me having an event like that would be a great way to go meet people on your street, on the neighboring street, around the corner, and really get everybody out of doors on one great day of bargain hunting. So, I just put that out there for my colleagues and the city staff today. I'm not moving anything on it right now, but I thought it was a really good idea that came up from the community. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you. Speaking of yard sales, community yard sales, New Hampshire Gardens held its first community-wide yard sale this past Saturday, Saturday morning. It went for about three or four hours. I don't know how many people were involved because I wasn't there to enjoy it, but I, because I was attending the MML meeting, a conference and more on that in a minute. But it turned out to be, I gather, very successful and will no doubt be repeated on an annual basis. And with that regard, I'm going to give a gold star to the president of the New Hampshire Gardens Civic Association, Holly Robertson and her husband, Brandon, who basically put this whole thing together. They deserve one hundred percent of the credit. Several of us on up here on the city council were able to attend the Fall Legislative Conference of the Maryland Municipal League, which was held in Solomons, Maryland, Wednesday, starting Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and ending Saturday. And a couple of things, I found a number of the sessions to be really terrific. One was a panel of attorneys, mostly attorneys, land use attorneys, real estate attorneys who are very familiar with Montgomery County, talking about a number of economic development tools that could be applicable to the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan to instigate and encourage development, perhaps also as well as at the Tacoma Junction. This would be including, one that they mentioned that doesn't apply, so I'll skip that, but one is the tax increment financing. Another is the DRRAs, which is Developer Rights and Responsibility Agreements, which are similar to partnerships, except that they vest the developer for a long term over many, many years of certain rights to develop. And they also mentioned, went into the new CR zoning that is, that Montgomery County is innovating, and which Langley, the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan is one of the very first areas in Montgomery County, and hence Maryland, to have this kind of flexible mixed-use zoning. So, in that score, we're ahead of many municipalities. So, and then it was also another session that I attended on risk management where the issue of filming and, you know, doing filming productions in municipalities came to the, came up. And it was, I learned that several cities, that the mayor, first of all, Maryland, state of Maryland, has a film office, that the city of Berlin on the eastern shore has had two major films produced in its, in its municipality, which would be a resource. Also, the city of Baltimore has a film office, and there was a lot of discussion of why having a policy mitigates a lot of risks for the city as well as for the producers of the film, be they for-profit or something on a much more modest scale. So, those were typical of some of the things that we are, we get exposed to when we go to these MML conferences, and I find them to be a really good use of my time and the city's money, I would say. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I would like to thank Washington Adventist University for coming. I look forward to working with you all in the future. I have a question for the city manager. Over the weekend, I was canvassing and I talked to a number of teenagers that did not know that they had the right to vote in this upcoming election. I was wondering if the city manager could reach out to some of the local high schools or direct staff to reach out to the local high schools, their newspapers, see if we can get a story that says that the election will allow at least sixteen-year-olds to vote and direct them to a link on our website where they can download the voter registration form. Thank you.
I'll just mention a couple of items. The first is that last Tuesday, there was a Maryland Municipal League Montgomery Chapter meeting here at the city, and this was to go over the final letter on behalf of the chapter to the county council concerning tax duplication. That issue is coming to the floor now, and the Government Operations Committee is going to be having two sessions on that. The first one will be coming up next Monday, a week from today, October twenty-eighth. And this letter was on behalf of the chapter. The members of the council have signed that letter, and also the city is sending our own letter. Deputy city manager Suzanne Ludlow has put a lot of time and effort into putting that letter together with backup documentation to make it clear to the county council members that some of the ideas that they're pursuing about tax duplication are headed in the wrong direction. So, a number of fronts are open on dealing with tax duplication issues. I know people who have heard this phrase may have heard it for five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. It's an ongoing issue. It seems to be coming to a head at the moment. The county is looking to change their way that they address it. And the Maryland Municipal League is also looking at discussions with Maryland Association of Counties about potential legislation at the state level. That was part of the reason for the, some of the work that was done at the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Conference in Solomons last week that Councilmember Schultz talked about. I spent a fair amount of time dealing with tax duplication issues there as well. Also, wanted to mention that one of the sessions that I went to there was on financial sustainability, and there was a fairly interesting look at five-year budgeting. We do that in the capital budget, but not in the rest of the budget. And there were a number of ways in which that can be very helpful. So, it was a good session on that. I also talked to some of the folks that Councilmember Schultz mentioned on the Economic Development Panel, and it was also very interesting. Then, two items locally. Last Saturday, I wanted to let folks know that last Saturday evening was the inaugural performance of the Tacoma Ensemble. This is a new musical group that has formed. This was their first performance ever, and they were part of the We Are Tacoma series. They're going to have, I believe, a second performance in February to follow up on that one. This room was full. I was here, I think I counted three empty seats total. This was a musical ensemble of strings, fourteen string players, and they played some very interesting music, and people really enjoyed it. And I know a lot of them look forward to some additional performances of this type in the future. And then a final note, that this Saturday, October twenty-sixth, the District Twenty delegation is going to be having a walk that starts in Silver Spring and ends in Tacoma Park at the VFW. It'll be coming, I'm going to be greeting them as they come into the city down Philadelphia Avenue a little bit afternoon, and this is to kick off their reelection campaigns. But if people want to have a chance to meet and talk with their District Twenty delegation, those folks will be walking through the city Saturday afternoon, ending about two o'clock at the VFW. And they would appreciate knowing if you're going to come to the VFW because they need to know numbers. Anybody else have anything? Okay, city manager, have any comments?
Just two very quick things. One is, before the Monster Bash this Saturday, I believe, starting at ten, there is a prescription drug turn-in that the police department is going to be doing. So, you can get rid of your old drugs before you go out with the kids, which I think is always a good thing to do. And then also, too, and I think the mayor beat me to it, just special thanks to deputy city manager Ludlow on the municipal tax duplication memos. We also had a meeting in Rockville that she set up today with some staff that was encouraging in some ways and not encouraging in other ways, which just, I think, underscores we need to continue to be vigilant around the municipal tax duplication issue. That's it.
And I'll add that I'll be meeting with Councilmember Urban on Wednesday. We will go to our special session, and the first item in the special session is a first training ordinance authorizing installation of traffic calming at Flower Avenue-Jackson Avenue intersection. Councilmember Mail, would you like to introduce that?
Of course I would. The Long Branch Sligo neighborhood has been concerned about traffic, speed, traffic volume through the neighborhood for years. Many residents of that neighborhood have been coming before council and speaking about this issue for more than five years now. And at least I've found testimony back always sixty, six years previously. What they've come to us to request is the installation of devices at the, at the junction of Flower Avenue and Jackson Avenue that would, in particular, increase compliance with the stop signs that are already present at this sort of complicated three-way intersection. And have indicated their support for, and encouraged the city to support installation of what are called stop bars. And to the extent that our Public Works Director wants to talk about those, we could get more of a description, but it's a, it's a structure that would very much prevent cars from just speeding right through the intersection, a raised, raised hump. It's less high than a speed bump, but, but a more acute angle to it. The draft ordinance that I appreciate city staff putting together allows for both the installation of the stop bars and then also for staff to be able to work with the community. And if the stop bars don't work out for some reason, then we would be giving the city staff the flexibility to move toward the raised crosswalk approach instead of the stop bars. So, that's a quick summary of the proposal before us. I did have one question about emergency vehicle use that came from the public and...
Before you do the question, is there a second?
I'll second it up.
Okay, thank you. Now, go ahead.
So, the question I would ask is, is sort of, A, whether there's anything we could do or need to do to deal with emergency vehicle travel along a street that has a stop bar on it? My related question to that, which may be answering itself, is if city policy allows emergency vehicles, or frankly, state policy allows emergency vehicles to travel on the opposite side of the road, whether that in itself could already be a solution to the stop bar? Because I'm assuming the stop bar would just be across the one lane, and so then vehicles could just go around it. Anyway, that's my question and maybe my answer, I don't know.
I don't know the answer to the issue of that city policy, whether our two vehicles can drive on the wrong side of the road, but we could follow up with the police department and confirm what the, what the requirements are there. In terms of the stop bar itself, we went and saw them in use in DC. Apparently, they're, they've had an installation there for a while at Sergeant Road and Emerson Street in the district. That was a four-way intersection. The stop bar hump itself is only two inches high, so it's less high than a regular traffic speed bump. It is also very evenly spaced, so it's a curved, curved, evenly curved hump. It's not like our speed bumps, which are kind of a bump on a hump. It's basically more like a Montgomery County standard speed bump. It is less wide than the existing stop bar standard, so it's only about two and a half feet wide. So, picture a two-inch elevation spread over two and a half feet in a very round shape. And it does just extend over the lane width of the road. I don't anticipate that an emergency vehicle would have any difficulty traveling over that. It would certainly, it would be a jar like anything else in the traffic calming world relative to speed humps or speed bumps. But because the height is less, it wouldn't cause an extreme problem for, for emergency vehicles.
Thank you.
And I'd be interested in knowing if it, if another location that they have, that the district has those is on Third Avenue, must be northeast. It's the road that connects as you come from Fort Totten to the eastern of New Hampshire. intersection. I was just on that one yesterday, and it felt like I had about six stop bars in a row, which made sense, because it would be making sure that traffic stopped on that essentially through street, through a residential neighborhood.
So, they were sort of using it as a rumble strip approach to the intersection?
Correct. Whether, whether that's what you're describing or something different.
Yeah. Usually rumble strips tend to be excavations of the street rather than humps up there.
This was a hump.
They're dug out, okay. Yeah. It may have been. Oftentimes rumble strips are also narrower, so they, you know, kinda have that da-da-da-da sound when you drive over them.
Well, this was just one per stop sign.
Yeah, probably so.
Question.
Councilmember Grimes.
Are there sidewalks at that intersection?
There are sidewalks on both sides of Flower Avenue from Carroll towards Jackson Avenue. There's sidewalk on one side past that intersection. There are no sidewalks that I'm, oh, no, there is a sidewalk on Jackson Avenue on one side approaching that intersection, so there's sidewalks.
But the intersection is accessible from all directions via sidewalk?
Yes.
Yeah, the reason I was asking, the question I didn't ask, which I won't ask then, but I'll say it anyway, is whether there were ADA issues with people who would be walking the streets because the sidewalk is lacking. But that might be a consideration in the future to, to check into in other situations, not this one.
Yeah, that was the first area where we did our ADA sidewalk work, so all the sidewalks there have been made ADA compliant with ADA compliant ramps.
Other questions from the council? Is there any public comments on this first reading ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Joe Edgell, Elman Larch, I first want to thank you for appointing the Safe Roadways Committee. I really appreciate that. I think that's something, a committee that could help on issues like this. I expressed a couple of weeks ago, when you all talked about this, some concern over emergency vehicle response and impacts to transportation such as bicycles. A couple of things I wanted to mention is I'm really concerned that we're prioritizing cost over safety. The city staff mentioned that a speed hump, basically a raised crosswalk, which is a more gentle slope, would have the same impact as this very, as Councilmember Mail described it, acute bump at higher cost, but lower impact both to delaying emergency vehicles and also a lower impact to cyclists. I bicycle through the Sergeant Emerson intersection myself on a fairly regular basis, and that thing they have there is brutal. And for those of you who bicycle, bicycles are most unstable when they're going slow, and at a stop sign, you've slowed down to a stop. And so, crossing an acute bump is an actual safety hazard, where if you're going a little bit faster, while it might be jarring, it's less of a safety problem. And remember, with respect to emergency vehicles, we want to consider traffic calming that doesn't slow them down or has less of a slowdown. And the sharper the bump, the more that it slows them down. In that spirit, I've got, and I'll give this to the city clerk, some language that you might consider adding to this ordinance that reads, "Any traffic control device or devices installed at the intersection of Flower and Jackson Avenues shall include accommodation for emergency vehicles in its design, so said traffic control device does not impede or delay emergency vehicles." I'd like to provide a copy of this if I could. I'd like you to consider adding that to the ordinance, and if you do or don't add that, it also would be good if you could consider the impact on bicycle traffic as well. And that can easily be accommodated by a small cut in the speed bump, so that after a bike makes a stop, they can proceed through that cut, and they don't have to hit the, the sharp bump. And I think that would satisfy the safety concerns while also balancing the safety concerns of bicycles and emergency vehicle travel with the safety concerns of the neighborhood, which are obviously very legitimate concerns. And I think something does need to be done at this intersection. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this first reading ordinance? Seeing none, we'll vote on this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, it passes unanimously.
Could I ask that before second reading, that the Public Works Director look into Mr. Edgell's suggestions regarding emergency vehicles and a cut for bicycles, and the ordinance can be changed before second reading?
So noted. Next is first reading ordinance, appointing judges for the 2013 city election. Does the city clerk want to say anything about this ordinance?
Not much to say. These are the judges who've applied to date and all. I'm sure will do a wonderful job. We're still recruiting a few additional judges, and I will have some additional names for second reading.
And if there's anybody out there who has not contacted you and they have an interest, should they contact you? Do you still need more beyond those who have already contacted you?
Yeah, I could, we could use a few, a few additional judges. And time is of the essence, because training is this week. It's Wednes, Thursday, and Saturday, so they would have to attend the training, so I would need to hear from them soon.
Okay, so they would need to hear, you would need to hear from them, and they would need to commit to it this week?
Yes.
So, that's full-day judges, closing judges, and all three types that you have here?
We probably, at this point, mainly need election day judges, the full day. Perhaps some early voting days, someone who might be available a couple early voting days would work as well, but mainly the full-day election day judges. We've got our closers.
So, that's, the polls are open 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. What are the hours for the judges?
It's, they start at 6:00 AM and they finish at, when they finish, 10:00 PM or thereabouts. Yeah, it's a long, brutal day.
It's a long day, but they do get paid $140.
That's right.
For sixteen hours.
They get pizza, right? They get, they get meals.
They'll get some food, too, yes.
Okay, would somebody like to move this ordinance?
Some moved.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any additional council comments on this? Councilmember Mail.
Just a semi-related query. When does the deadline for absentee ballot requests?
To request them by mail, I should have the applications by October 29th. After that, there's not time to mail both ways, so after that, I'd suggest that people bring their application, so they can, the applications can be faxed or emailed. And in some cases, as it gets closer to the election, they may want to actually pick up an absentee ballot.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Daniels, go on.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to officially say, the document that your committee, the committee produced, the marketing document they produced was excellent, and I think we all should reread it and apply it to other areas of, you just have to change it from election to whatever it is you're trying to get done, because it's, it was, it's just excellent. It covered, I don't think there's much it, it doesn't cover. So, pass that on to them and give them a big whoopee. All right? A gold star. They got a gold star last week for it, I think.
Any public comment on this first reading ordinance, appointing judges for the election? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, it passes unanimously. We will move to our third special session item, which is a first reading ordinance authorizing Budget Amendment Number Three for the current fiscal year FY14. Maybe if somebody would like to move it and second it, and then I'll have the city manager say anything that he wants to say about this.
Some moved?
There were two moved. Did you get both of them? One's a move, one's a second? Councilmember Mail and Councilmember Grimes, I think? Okay, maybe the deputy city manager's gonna do this. Which one?
Before we use Budget Amendment Number Three, there were several items that have come to light that we'd like to get acknowledged in the budget for, we don't have that many meetings for a short period of time, and try to get this settled this fall. Some of these are kind of exciting. The first is that Chuck E. Cheese's is bringing in the money, and we get a cut of their quarters that go into the, into the vending machine, into the little games. And they have submitted to the state a first-quarter payment for the admissions and amusement tax of $35,000 to the city. So, we are acknowledging that with a change in expected revenue to $136,000 for this year for admissions and amusement tax. That compares to what we've received in past years, which is about $400 in a year. So, this, we did double-check to make sure it was accurate, that it came to the right place. Both the Finance Director and I have spoken to the State Office of Assessments, and indeed, it looks like this is an ongoing positive contribution to the city. So, I was happy to hear that. Take your kids to Chuck E. Cheese's.
Increases our admissions and amusement tax receipts by like-
Trillion percent.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't, I didn't fill-
It is 355 X.
Times.
355 X.
So, it's, it's substantial. The second item is a designation of $40,000 towards consultant costs for advice related to the Washington and Venice Hospital Certificate of Need process. And a contract will then come before you for those services, but I did want to have that allocation in our city budget. The third item is kind of a wash, but it's essentially $36,000 in and $36,000 out to pay for the TKPK 5K race. In the past, this item primarily has the, the kind of keeping of the accounts of the participant fees, sponsor fees, and then the expenses have been handled by PTAs and the like. Because there's been a change in one portion of it that affects the city, it made sense for us to, to handle it in-house. We are expecting about the same amount of money in as, as goes out. We would not exceed that, but we would reflect a change of $36,000 in the special revenues budget. The fourth item is acknowledging donations that a recreation department has received. $2,000 from basketball player Jason Misskeery for YES League uniforms. And then we received a total of $900 from a number of organizations and businesses towards the Monster Bash, and so we're acknowledging that in the, in the budget. Happy to answer. Any questions you may have?
I'll just start with a comment. I asked the city manager what the revenues in past years were on this admissions and amusement tax, thinking it was, wasn't very much, and in fact, it wasn't very much. But this change is significant enough that it's the equivalent to two-thirds of a cent on the property tax rate. So, it's an example of the kind of thing that can happen when the city gets a business that pays certain taxes that can reduce the burden on the sectors of our city that pay the most in taxes now, which tends to be the single-family homeowners through property taxes. We don't have too many taxes that we can assess other than the property tax, but the, this amusement and admissions tax is one that we are authorized by the state to have, and it's an example of if you can target and attract certain businesses, you can, you can make a big difference in the tax receipts of the city and therefore shift some of the Other comments? Councilmember Mail.
I'm sorry, could you just clarify what, and you may have said this, and I just missed the first part. What's the revenue from the TKPK 5K?
The participant fees and sponsor contributions total about $36,000.
But does that money still go to the local schools?
And the, well, the concept is that the expenses then would come from that. If there is an excess in income, then it would, that excess would be divided among the five PTAs that participate, which is similar to the way that this-
I spoke to, to our HCD Director, who has been managing the 5K process, and I think that historically, there's been somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $12,000 that's been distributed to PTAs after the event. That amount is actually included sort of in the $36,000, so this is an estimate of what we think the actual expenses will be, and that includes the payout to the PTAs. So, I think that the actual expenses for shirts and other logistics, I think, is roughly like $24,000 or so, and then we're hopeful that we'll get the additional $12,000 to $10,000, or whatever we get over the 24 is effectively what we're gonna be distributing to the PTAs.
Okay, thank you. Related question to budget amendments, but not necessarily the specific ones on here. During a community meeting with the Chief of Police two weeks ago, the issue came up of getting officers out on patrol more often outside their cars, and the idea was broached by citizens about having electric bikes or segways. There was some discussion, I believe, of the, by the police chief or someone, that bicycles by themselves are difficult because the city's hilly. What I care about is making sure that officers are out there being effective, looking for crimes happening, looking for home break-ins happening. So, I just hope in the future, we could talk about budget amendments when the chief is back. That would potentially deal with this, if this really is an equipment need. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels, go on.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I've also discussed segways versus electric bikes with the chief, and he said, you know, the half-electric bike, half-pedaling, when they're going fast, he said, they hit a curb and it busts the front tire. So, that's why he thought segways might be better. I, I don't think segways are better, because I, yeah, it's pretty much a flat kind of a thing. It doesn't, you can't go uppity-uppity, you know, into someone's backyard unless it is, is a road. But he's at a convention, I believe, in, in these next-
For this week, yeah.
Yeah, for this week. So, I, I have sent him an email, but I sent him, Councilmember Mail, and thought we could maybe wait a moment to discuss such things. It, it seems pretty logical, especially, I know we, we did electric bikes a couple of years ago down at National Night Out. Joe Reyes was down there, and he's an electrical bike kind of a guy, and that's what he does. So, I, I want to see how much it might cost, the least expensive we could make, make it work and see if it'll, it'll rock and roll. Because evidently, that section of the city is, how do I say this? Not as well-traveled, foot-traveled, not so much police travel, but foot-traveled. And they've had a great deal, a lot of break-ins down there. They just had another one the other, I think, two days ago, so.
Councilmember Schultz.
My nephew works sort of, has a relationship with the Segway manufacturer, companies based in New Hampshire. I can check with him on what its specifications are for managing inclines and other obstacles, if you want, or if, unless the police have already, and they probably have, done this, so.
Thanks.
So, it's, do you want me here or not?
Well, I, I guess at this point, I mean, I think we have a lot of discussion we need to have with, with the Chief of Police on what's really most appropriate. I do know that he's very familiar with segways, and he's ridden them, you know, in the past and has used them.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, any other council comments? Is there any public comment on this first reading ordinance authorizing Budget Amendment Number Three? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, it passes unanimously. We will now move to our work session. We have two items. The first one is a discussion of compost collection program expansion. Okay.
Next, you want to go through? Oh, you can't go up there, right? We have a PowerPoint issue.
I, on, what we may try to do is that while we're trying to get it up on the screen, maybe we'll just start to go through, because I think all of you all have it in your packets yourselves, and our Public Works Director will be just very illustrative in her descriptions.
I used my big picture where-
we'll just start to go through, because I think all of you all have it in your packets yourselves. And our Public Works Director will be just very illustrative in her descriptions.
I'll use my big picture words. Thank you. As in our department, been very excited with starting this program. It's something that we wanted to do for quite a long time, and we're limited mostly by processing capacity. So once the processing end of things got resolved, we were able to move forward with the program. Should I wait, or should I go?
No, no, go.
It's your call. It's your call. We'll have it up in a few minutes, but you might want to not take the time.
Okay. Just a brief picture about Tacoma Park's existing waste management systems. We have what I would call a robust curbside recycling and mandatory yard waste program. It handles about 54% of what the city picks up. Now, I'd step back to say, the city collects from about 3,300 homes. Those include single-family homes, multifamily, up to 12 units, and townhomes. With the multifamily units, apartment owners have the choice of whether to use city service or whether to contract out for private service. So it's up to them which way they go. The city does have a mandatory recycling law, so they have to provide a recycling program regardless of whether they use the city program or a commercial contractor. So we don't pick up from all multifamily, but we do pick up from quite a few. Over the calendar year, last year in 2012, we collected about just under 3,300 tons of trash, about 2,250 tons of yard waste, and about 1,500 tons of recycling. So for the trash, it represents about 46% of our waste stream. Yard waste, about 32%, and the recycling, about 22%. Now, a word on the yard waste. That includes our vacuum leaf collection program, as well as our weekly curbside collection program. So it's not just what we're picking up on the curbs on Monday. It's also what we vacuum collect over the five weeks that we do the loose leaf collection in the fall, which is one of the reasons those numbers are so high. But it's also a reflection of the nature of the city and the heavy tree canopy that we have. So it's, we have a very high yard waste component. Taking a look at what's available nationally, EPA has done analysis of what's in the solid waste stream. And basically, the largest item in the waste stream of most municipal jurisdictions is about 28% paper, paperboard, followed by almost 14% of food scraps. So food scraps represents the second highest component of what's found in municipal waste. 13% for yard trim. And then you start going down by some of the other items. Plastics, metals, leather, wood, glass, and other all represent 12% and less of their individual components. And we offer that just to show that food waste is a major part of the waste stream. And if you're really about reducing what you're disposing of, you got to have that as a component of the program. In February of this year, we started two pilot programs. We picked two areas of the city. One was collected by contractor, one was collected by city crews. We asked for proposals from companies that do the food waste collection program. Because we are fairly thin-staffed for, in terms of all the projects we've got going, and because this was a new item for us, we really wanted to partner with organizations that have been involved with food waste collection. So we wanted to use their expertise for what kind of promotional materials do you need to have? What kind of questions are people going to have? What kind of containers should we make available to folks? Should they have liners, should they not? So we thought that it would really help us by partnering with organizations that had been in the business, so to speak, so we could start out a little much further ahead of the wheel. We also benefited in both pilot areas by the organizations that we partnered with. They established a online registration, so everything was done online. Once we notified residents in the pilot area of the program, they could sign up online. And then all their information about their location, how many people in their households, as well as just general information about the program, and then questions or issues about miscollection could all be done electronically. So it really streamlined the communication process. There were a few people that didn't have online access available, so we did that the old-fashioned way with telephones. But these days, more and more percentage of the population is having access to computers. So in the two pilot areas, one was, ended up having a participation of 65 residents. It started out in an area. We offered it to 260 homes. We found in both our pilot areas that we had a participation rate for those folks we offered of about 25 to 30%. So, you know, for every 100 people we asked, 25 to 30 would say yes. And at first, we were surprised by that. We thought our participation rate would be higher in talking to people and just sort of gathering general information. Some of the reasons people didn't want to participate was because they were already doing composting in their backyard, so they didn't want to lose that compost that they had themselves. And they were managing it in their own yard and preferred that as an option.
So the two pilot areas had additional capacity. You could have taken more households in each of those areas.
The two pilot areas had-
Additional capacity. You could have taken more households if more had wanted to.
Well, we set a limit of 65 for the one pilot and a limit of 300 for ours. So we set a-
So you were actually at the limit?
Yeah, we were at the limit. We kept expanding the service area until we got the participation numbers that we had targeted.
So did you have any estimate for the unmet demand? In other words, if you marketed it more, would you have had a 65% rate?
I don't think so. We're just starting that now with the city pilot, the one that the city does, the 300 household pilot. It's specifically, I believe, it's either the Wednesday or the Thursday trash route. So I've recently done another mailing to them saying, we've passed the pilot area. We're going to keep on going. Anybody who didn't sign up the last time around, it's open and available for you. I can't remember how many people we sent that to, but so far, we've heard from 25. So we're not seeing a whole big jump beyond that initial. In that particular pilot area, we had about a 35% participation rate. So in Area 1, we had a total participation of 65 houses. The contractor provided the collection in that pilot program and maintained all the communication with the participants through an email communication. And they provided all the materials for education, answering questions, missed pickups, kind of the whole thing. Originally, they were also offering just vegetable scrap collections. They didn't take meat or dairy. They were limited by their processor. They were processing at a local farm in Montgomery County that didn't want to deal with the dairy products or the meat products. They also didn't want to deal with too much paper waste either, because they were really focused on a very pristine end product, and were concerned about maintaining a high quality. Over time, we ended up changing from that processing facility, going to one that we used for the city pilot. Let me just scroll back here to where I am in my presentation, if I can. Oops. Don't know. Someone's going to have to tell me how to-
Oh, I have to do it?
Okay. Scroll it, I guess, backward. I'm like on the third slide in the program. There we go. Keep going. Backwards. There you go. There we go. That's our two pilot areas. So Area 1 was the 65 household pilot. Area 2 was the 300 household pilot. And again, we offered it to 850 homes. 300 signed up. In that pilot area, the city did the collection on Mondays. But all the registration provision of containers was all done by contractor. So our contractor maintained the registration site, did all the communication, and actually did the delivery of the containers and the compostable liners when we started out. So, you know, when you're getting up in numbers, having somebody else deliver 300 containers is always a plus. We delivered the 65 containers ourselves. Let's see. Next slide. This shows just some of what we did to promote the program. Initially, everybody got a letter from the city explaining that we were going to start this program. We followed up with a postcard to each of those households that were in the pilot areas, tried things like QR codes, just be a little snappy and try to catch people's imagination. We sent out a total of three mailings in the process of generating interest and support. We also shared information through listservs in areas where they had a focus listserv for the neighborhood we were working on. Next slide. And this is another bit of promotional material that was used with the 65 pilot program. You see there, it doesn't include meat and fish additionally. So this was the kind of information that was made available on the website. So unless someone wanted to download it, we were trying to save paper by having that information all available online. Next slide. Some of the details about the collection. We gave everybody a five-gallon bucket with a screw-top lid. We gave them compostable plastic bags that the city had purchased. And of course, we had the website access for questions and comments. People put their container out in the mornings of the collection day. We yanked the bag out, threw it in a truck, and drove it to the composting site. Next slide. We take our compost originally from the one pilot and then for both pilots to Chesapeake Compost Works in Curtis Bay. It opened in October of last year. It's a very large warehouse in an otherwise fairly abandoned-looking part of Baltimore. They're producing about, processing about 100 tons of food waste weekly, and they produce about 150 cubic yards of compost weekly. We started taking back our compost to our public works facility and making it available to the program participants. We started out by saying you can get five buckets of compost available for your homes. So we tried to make that full cycle with folks, and we're hoping to enhance that in the future. Next slide. Some of the details about collection. We ran this program for eight, this is in eight months, from February 7th to now, as of when we stopped collecting data, October 7th. We collected 55 tons. The average weight of food waste that was set out per household was a little over 12 pounds, and the average set-out rate was 70%. So of those folks that signed up, 70% put their food waste out every week, or, yeah, 70% was out weekly. Comparing to what we collect with our other programs, trash, we average about 38 pounds a week, and recycling, we average about 18 pounds a week, again, per set out. And based on our initial program results, kind of a thumbnail sketch of the city, trash generation is estimated each house produces an average of 2,000 pounds of trash, 900 pounds of recycling, and 300 pounds of food waste.
Before you move on, so just to understand this, 38 pounds here would include the 12 pounds?
Yes. Right. Next slide.
How interested were people in taking compost from the city?
You know, we had a total of 365 people who could, households who could come and get it. I think from that, we probably had about 40 or 50 people that came to pick some up.
So is there any potential for selling compost to people who are not program participants?
Our composting processor would certainly like us to partner with them to do that. So, yeah, there's a definite interest there. And it's like, you know, with the recycling triangle, unless you're purchasing it at the back end, you're not participating fully in the whole cycle. So you really need to reuse it in order to make the process work. We did a survey of the participants. We received, about a third of the people responded. It was an online survey. 91% stated they can put their container out weekly. It wasn't what we found in our data collection, but of the people who responded, that was their perception. 28% said their container was about half-full, 37% said three-quarters full, and 20% said full. 95% said they had less trash as a result of their participation. Most folks felt the container size was right. Interesting to me, 61% reported that they did not do backyard composting, and 39% reported that they did previous to the start of our program. Almost 70% said they wouldn't participate if there was a charge, and 31% said they would participate if there was a charge. And 90% indicated they were interested in continuing beyond the pilot. Next slide. This is just the program costs for our initial program from February through October. The costs we paid to our partner organizations, our mailing, bin covers and liners that we purchased for the 65 unit pilot that we were doing. The tip fee, there is a charge to bring the food waste to our processing facility. They currently charge the same tip fee as we have at the county incinerator, so there's no price difference there. That's one of those things that's going to be affected by market demand. When there's nothing else going on, they're going to match the cost of the going rate for disposal. We added in a projection of fuel costs based on our trips up to Curtis Bay. Total cost, what we spent so far today is about $33,500. It does not include any staff time in that cost figure. Next slide. Trying to figure out what this would mean if we developed this program citywide. This is a very conservative estimate. Again, assuming a 30% participation rate, we feel we could bump our diversion, our reduction in trash from the current 54% to 57%. So we could increase our diversion of trash by 3% if we were to expand this program citywide. Obviously, the higher participation rate would result in a higher diversion rate. Next slide. Some questions that still need to be answered. There is a lot going on. It's, the composting industry is really new in Maryland. Lot of unknowns. We don't have any large facilities nearby in our area. However, Prince George's County is breaking ground on their composting facility. There's a ribbon cutting this week on Wednesday. A private company that's called Pinnacle Waste, it's been very active in this industry in Delaware, has announced they plan to open a facility in Prince George's County as well. There is no facility currently in Montgomery County. There are a few farms that are accepting food waste. The nearest facility to us has been the Baltimore facility in Curtis Bay. We're still looking at the most efficient method of collection. Most large programs, I went up to Howard County and spoke with their folks. They have a fairly large program that they started. They pick up yard waste and food waste together. You already have the trucks, you already have the staff, you already have the routes. So if they can combine the food waste with yard waste, take them all to the processor, it's the most efficient way to add food waste to your program. What that means is you generally provide a large cart to participants, so a 35- or 65-gallon toter, or trash cart that people can use for the yard waste program. In terms of cost, there's some pluses and minuses to that approach. We currently process our yard waste from October through April at our public works facility for no cost. So we don't charge ourselves to bring in yard waste to our facility. So a combined collection that would mix the food waste with the yard waste wouldn't be able to be processed at our facility, so we'd have to use a composting facility for all that tonnage. So that would result in additional cost. So if the food waste were to be collected separately from the yard waste, like we're currently doing on our pilot program, additional staff will be required to provide a program citywide.
Do you have an estimate of that cost?
Estimate of the cost for additional staff? Well, we'd take at least one or two people. The difficulty there is it wouldn't be a full week. It would just be the one day that we have the yard waste pickup. We feel like we could probably manage that program citywide in two days. Next slide. So as a result of some of this stuff still shifting out around our area, it's our recommendation that for the next phase of expansion, we use, take a look at using contract collection, because there's still a lot of things developing in the composting infrastructure. So in that regard, we issued an RFP. We received two proposals. We had a very well-priced proposal from one of our partners from the previous pilot. They've offered a rate of $2.65 per home per week for a 34-week program. Originally, that 34 weeks just came from when we had our bid opening to the end of the fiscal year. We're a little bit past that now, but that's where the 34 weeks comes from. We anticipate we'd have a similar 30% participation rate. So our new program service area would be advertised to about 1,700 homes. Our existing pilot service area for the areas we're doing now is 1,110 households. So together, those two programs would cover 2,800 homes of the 3,300 that we currently provide service for. Next slide. Some of the program offerings that they have, they would set up the registration website. Actually, they already have ones. They would just put that back into use. They would send out three promotional mailings to the target area. They would purchase and deliver the buckets, the lids, and the liners. They've developed a how-to video that would be available on their website in addition to their other information. They maintain a phone and email website to answer questions. They would do the pickup. They'd also do miss pickup service. They transported to Chesapeake Compost Works. They provide us with all the data they have been providing us in terms of collection amounts, weights, registration information. And they would take a survey at four months and at eight months, and we would participate with them in developing the questions for that survey. And of course, they would maintain all the permits, license, and insurance required to carry out their work. Next slide. The areas of expansion, what you see there in the blue, again, kind of like we did with our initial pilot areas, we sort of pick an area that we mail to, see what our participation rate, you know, acceptance rate is over, say, three or four weeks. And then we just keep growing it to get to the number of households that we want to get to. In this particular program, we're looking to bring on an additional 500 households. So we would keep expanding that service area until we got to 500 households. One thing that we will be focused on is the single-family and accessory and small apartment buildings. We wouldn't be gearing this towards any of the garden-style or larger apartment buildings just because you really kind of have to work with them on an individual basis. This kind of set-out service isn't generally how they manage their- This kind of set-out service isn't generally how they manage their trash, so we would be focused on a single-family and small multifamily buildings.
And the additional numbers of participants would include the, what did you say, 25 people in the existing pilot areas who expressed an interest?
Yes, we're going to expand our existing 300-household pilot to anybody in that Thursday trash route that will add on, so we're going to continue bugging them until, try to see what we can get in terms of bump up in participation rate. And then anything beyond our Thursday trash route will be going to the contractor, providing that council agrees, up to 500 households.
So this anticipates keeping the city collecting the Thursday route?
Yes.
And having the contractor doing the other existing one and all the new?
Yeah, yeah. What we've been trying to do is figure out the most cost-effective way of expanding this while the industry sort of settles itself out, and then we decide ultimately if we want to go to a mixed curbside collection, or if we want to maintain a separate collection. Next slide. I think this is the end. Yeah, I just wanted to put a little shout out there, and this is a discussion for another time, but city staff have been talking about additional program areas like zero-waste events. But we've also started a program at the farmer's market. We started it in the Crossroads Farmer's Market with much success. Basically, we enabled a drop-off to be worked out at the farmer's market, so people who weren't in the pilot area and wanted to participate and went to the farmer's market could bring their food waste there to be collected by our, in that truck, that red truck there that's in the slide. In addition to that program, our partner was able to work with a couple of programs, one that provides, it's a gleaning program, basically, it provides unsellable but still usable and safe foods to food banks and soup kitchens. So they work with the farmers. The farmers, anything that they can't sell, they don't want to haul back to their farms, they can get pennies on the pound for, so they get paid for a certain portion of that food. That food's then taken to a, one of those kitchens that develop the food bank foods, and then the farmers are also paid for the product rather than having to throw it out and waste it. So it was a way that we could bring in households as well as help the farmers out, and it's tied into an educational program, so the people that are working with the gleaning program are folks that are either homeless or in regat programs, and they're teaching them life skills that they can then use to get jobs in the future. So we are wanting to expand this to the other farmer's market, and we hope to do that this spring, and we can tell you more about how that's working. We've been talking with the folks at the OTBA about that, and we'll be doing the Langley Farmer's Market until it ends here shortly in November, and then hope to start up again in the spring.
Okay.
So what we, yeah, I was just going to say, what we have is just a presentation tonight. We intended to come back for our first reading, or a single reading ordinance for a contract award next week.
I had two questions. The first one is, I've heard an awful lot lately about zero-waste. What's your sense of the, kind of the general timeframe that people are talking about getting to a zero-waste, solid waste management program? It seems like everybody feels like it's going to come, it's just a question of how long.
Are you talking for our municipality's zero-waste, or zero-waste relative to events? I mean, I think we are pretty, I mean, I think we could start working with some of our major festivals and events to create zero-waste programs now. There's processing capacity available. We've learned from folks about how you have to set those programs up. They require a lot of care and feeding, you can't just kind of, like we do now, put a recycling container next to a trash can and walk away from it and assume people will understand what they're supposed to do. So if you want to make a zero-waste event work, you have to have all your containers available in localized spots, and you have to have a volunteer there who says, "Put your food waste there, your bottles and cans here, your trash there, if there is any trash." So it really requires much more kind of face-to-face discussions until people get familiar with what this is.
And I wasn't necessarily thinking about events, I was thinking about collection, total.
Well, I don't want to sound skeptical, but I don't think we'll ever get to zero-waste or a municipal trash program. I think, if you're asking me what our percentage can get down to, you know, a lot of that depends on what consumer products are produced with, so, you know, some of that is kind of this two-edged sword of what you buy, how recyclable is what you buy. So I think we're at a very aggressive state now with 40, what, 46% that's currently our waste stream. If we continue to grow our food waste program, I think we can see a reduction in that by, hopefully, more than that 3% we projected. But I think to get, you know, lower than 40% into the 30s would be, would be really wonderful, but quite aggressive.
And my second question is budget implications of this, if you could just give us a sense of how this is going to work.
Yeah, well, the price that we have for this pilot program for the 34 weeks that's been offered was, I believe, just over $45,000 for the, the cost for that through, just would be, end up being into July, from when we start the program in December through July.
So that's already in this, in our budget?
We are currently using our sustainable funds for the food waste program, so we have those $250,000 that were set in the budget for sustainability programs, some of which has been used by the Brendel Group work. That $33,500 was used both in last fiscal year and this fiscal year out of the sustainability money for the food waste program. It would be our proposal that that was where the funding would come from for the expanded food waste program.
Okay. Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. I know the program is extremely popular on Woodland and Sycamore, where I see and hear from people most often, and hear great stories of people who never composted before and now would never go back, they say. I note that from the chart, you were suggesting it might increase our overall city recycling by about 3%, but when I asked you that question before about the calculations, for the homes that are actually doing it, it's reducing the trash weight by 30%. So for people carrying out a 50-pound?
Right.
Trash can full of trash?
Right.
You're dropping your trash weight down by 30%.
Yeah, that's a very good point. We tend to think of it in the collective whole, but I think for an individual household, there's this, you know, significant and very real difference in that.
Right, so I mean, I just, I point that out because, to the mayor's question about zero-waste, if you can show a program that's going to make a 30% drop in household waste, then the question becomes at some point in the future, how do we get 100% of households doing this? That would equal, you know, a 30% reduction in the remaining waste stream. I'd note that places like San Francisco and Los Angeles have 60% to 80% recycling rates, so we have room to improve, or we could keep going further. And similarly, in California, they signed in 2010 a statewide law that mandates all commercial retail businesses that produce more than a certain amount of waste to compost. So they've taken compost even a step further, and, you know, just like, just like county policy, I think, where it requires all of our businesses to have a recycling plan. In California, they've gone further, maybe other places too, and require not just a recycling plan, but also a composting plan. But I'm, you know, supportive of the pilot. Thank you.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thanks. I'm supportive of this. My questions are about certain particulars. This sheet here mentions an exclusion of compostable food service ware. That's more of a concern for food service businesses than for individual residences, but what are the prospects there?
Well, part of the issue that came up, that was that pilot where we had a very, they were very concerned about quality control for their composting thing, and there's still a lot of variation in the industry about if a utensil is truly compostable. So there's a lot of discussion back and forth, and since they couldn't verify that you purchased your compostable utensil from a really compostable place, they didn't want to accept it at I don't know if that answered your question, but...
I, you know, I still think back to a trip I took to San Francisco three or more years ago, and I was just stunned that it's a city requirement there, but of course, it's a much larger city than ours, that food service ware must be compostable. That's utensils, plates, but you, you know, I understand from talking to people like Nessa Richmond, it requires a higher temperature for composting. I hadn't heard about the contamination question. I mean, I kind of wonder about all kinds of stuff. Well, mention a topic which is something that is surely not feasible in the near term here, which is a residential concern, which is disposable diapers. You know, for families with children who have diapers, that's a substantial amount of literally waste. So anyway, you know, maybe eventually we'll be able to go in that direction. I just was mainly curious about the food service ware, though.
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of issues about how it's produced and the market for it. So again, it's one of those things, it's a chicken and egg. If you have the requirement, then industries will step up to produce the product, and if you have a strong composting infrastructure, they're basically black balls, companies that don't make a good product, then you, the best kind of rise to the top, and you end up getting enough in the waste stream to be able to eliminate that as a concern.
Councilmember Schultz.
When we deliver this stuff to the facility in Curtis Bay, do they pay us for it?
We pay them.
We pay them.
$55 a ton.
Because it, I guess I'm confused here, and I know you'll straighten me out. We're spending money to collect food waste and doing, having to do these extra pickups, but I don't, I don't see where the, where the revenue benefit, where is that in this process?
Yeah, it's kind of similar to when the recycling program started out. In order to run a program, it costs money. You can't run a program for free, and there's oftentimes an illusion that the value of the end product will be so great that it'll offset all the costs of the program, and that just isn't reality. So all the programs that we do have a cost, even our recycling program. There's times when we get paid a small amount for the recyclables that we deliver to the recycling facility, but the costs that we have in staffing and trucks and gas and collection, farc, it's what we get from a revenue point of view from selling our recyclables. It's also very market-dependent based on what's, what else is going on in the country. So this is kind of similar to that. There is an infrastructure, you know, a person has to pay their electric bill and hire employees and manage the process, and that all has a cost. It's one of those things that the, the more material he, that processor can get in, the less cost it is per ton to generate it. So, you know, once the market continues to grow, the price per ton will hopefully come down. Once there's competing industries, hopefully as well, the price will come down. I imagine once the Prince George's County's facility's open, we'll see a change in the cost per ton. But it's just market forces now setting the rates.
Fuel costs will drop, and I can see where a lot of costs that were, are in the pilot will shrink. I just, I just think it's important to understand that while our residents can be understandably very enthusiastic about, say, this particular program or recycling in general, because it's good for the environment and all these other values that we hold dear, it does cost the city money. It's not free. It's not like we collect all this plastic, these plastic cans and newspapers, and somebody pays us a lot of money for it, and we come out and break it. There's a net cost to all this, and so, I mean, that, that adds to, to the property tax rate, and I think, you know, that we somehow or another imagine that, you know, this is, this is one of those things that doesn't cost, that all works out in the end, everybody turns out. You know, and I, it's just, I think we need to be, just, just to pay attention to that. I realize that the pilot itself is, is not a fair way of examining cost, because it's experimental, and there's so many variables that are changing every day.
And the budget each year, we put in a revenue, projected revenue stream as well as an actual revenue stream from the past year, so you can see year to year what we get recycling-wise, and it's, it's not a big number.
One of the questions, concerns is the pickup efficiency with the current trash recycling. The crews know to stop at every address, but with this, it's more like a newspaper route. You're only going to pick on certain houses where you'll, you'll stop, and that can change daily practically as this program goes. Somebody drops out, somebody adds in, and all this sort of thing. I, that would seem to me, wouldn't that be kind of a difficult thing for us to administer?
Again, in this pilot program, we have a list that the operators work on, and so they check each time they go at a house, because we were tracking participation rates, so we wondered to know who set out when. So they, that was part of what they did, they would identify. In terms of, you know, these folks are familiar with houses and streets. You say a house number, they'll know what house that is. They're very familiar because it's what they do every day, so...
But I'm thinking in terms, when, when we grow this program to citywide, if we have 35% participation, that's, that's just, it's just going to be more administrative, it's going to be, I'm just thinking out loud here, obviously.
It's not, it's not difficult for our drivers to incorporate household stops, and I'm also envisioning in the future, you know, as GPS services increase, you could have it loaded into something right in the vehicle that would tell them which house they go to next, and would even design the route. So, you know, we're, it's not a diff, we do it basically the old-school way right now. We print out a list, and that's what they use, but there's technical improvements that could be made.
Okay. Aren't, in addition to backyard composting, aren't kitchen disposers also a, an enemy of this program?
Well, that's, that's certainly, there's a lot of discussion in Howard County about, I can't even think of the name of it now, whatever's in the bottom of your sink. Obviously, I don't have one in my house, or else I would remember the, what they're called.
Garbage disposal.
Garbage disposal, thank you very much. The thing that, when a spoon goes down, you know it, that's what I was going to say. So, yes, it taxes the sanitation system if you put food down the, down the disposal. It certainly reduces your waste, so if you're just looking at it from a waste point of view?
Right.
You get the reduction in waste, what you get is an increased cost in your, in your sanitary process. Now, again, if your sanitary system is composting its sewage sludge, then it ends up getting reused and pulled out and turned into usable product, so there's, it's kind of depends on what part of the country you're in and what, how the process is handled, what, what's more positive or, or less.
Obviously, every answer.
Everything's complicated.
Every question is complicated right now. Thank you.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for this presentation, Daryl. Don't you envision the day when there isn't a list of addresses for people to stop, and they just, the drivers drive by and they see the bucket as they do the recycle bins now?
Right.
And they pick them up and dump them in, so, that's a, that's kind of a phase-in problem they have right now?
Yeah.
It's going to be replaced with full compliance by city residents?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's not a, it's not an issue for our collection. Depending on which way we go ultimately, if we have a mixed yard waste and food waste, whatever's out there gets picked up at the same time, it won't be an issue at all.
Great, thank you.
Councilwoman Grimes.
This is just out of curiosity. I wonder whether the amount of material that people compost will be higher in the winter. The pilot excluded the coldest months, when people are maybe less likely to compost at their own properties. I wonder if that's something to look out for. Councilmember Schultz mentioned the revenue angle. You found that 31% of the households that participated said they would be able, willing to pay something. Do you have any kind of idea what they would be willing to pay, and then this is leading to whether there could be some kind of two-tier program where people who are willing to pay get some kind of gold-plated service or higher capacity, or I don't know what?
You know, it's something we can...
Or a gold star from Councilmember Canyon, Dallas Cohen, or something.
We can follow up in our survey program this next time around to try to kind of fine-tune that. When we asked it the first time, we got some very strong reactions from people to that question, almost offended that we asked the question about, would you be willing to pay for this program? Kind of like, are you saying I'm cheap? Or, I mean, people really took offense, not a lot, I mean, there was a percentage of people that were offended we asked the question.
You charge for junk hauling for larger items, or, you know, special pickups. This isn't special, special pickup, but, you know, maybe there could be some kind of different frequency of collection, or I don't know what, it's just something to think about.
Well, that gets into the whole pay-as-you-go, pay-as-you-throw program, so you have a tiered program that if you aren't participating well in a recycling or compost program, your trash, your pay for trash is higher than if you are, and then you have...
Well, so this gets into another point, that people have been discussing all kinds of places, not just here, which is, you know, your first trash can, trash can is free, your second trash can costs, you know, X amount of money, you know, things like that to encourage greater amount of food waste composting and so on. It's a much larger discussion than this.
Yes, it is.
We will look at it.
I would also suggest that when you ask people and they get offended about the idea they're being asked to pay, they have, help them to understand that they are already paying for it out of their tax bill.
Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you. Daryl, thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question. This is the fiscal impact here in the blue sheet for 34 weeks, 500 households, a little more than $45,000. What is the estimate, that, we're going to do this year-round, right?
Yes.
For two weeks. What is the estimate that for 800 households? What is the estimate that for 800 households, what is it going to cost the city?
Well, over that period of time, we would, it would be, I'd have to come up with that number. We, we could develop the cost for the city's portion of that, which would, again, depending on if you include salary or not.
Yes, I would like to see salary.
So, I could work out those numbers.
Okay. All right. Next presentation, can you bring that to us? Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much. We will take a short break and we will be back for our last item, which is a discussion of proposed Tacoma Metro Development Resolution.
Hey, you know, I was thinking about, well, what would we give up with this tax deflation? And frankly, frankly, voice calling is.
In the packet, we've got a number of items, including a draft resolution, summaries of oral testimony, a number of emails from folks. So, we have any number of things in, in the packet that people have provided us. And I see that Councilmember Grimes has provided us with something else this evening. Maybe you'd like to start.
Sure. Thank you. So, thank you to the staff, first of all, for putting together a draft resolution here. This draft resolution would transmit comments made at the public hearing from a few weeks ago to the Wamata Board. That's a worthwhile thing to do. I would seek, and community members would seek, a different sort of resolution. So, I'll mention a few upcoming milestones in the Tacoma project. The Wamata Board will meet this Thursday, October 24th, their regular monthly meeting. They have deferred consideration of the amended joint development agreement for Tacoma until after a traffic study is done. The traffic study is underway. This was a commitment that the Wamata Board member who's in charge of the Planning Program Development and Real Estate Committee made. The expectation is the traffic study would be completed in time for the November 7th PPDRE, or Real Estate Committee Meeting. And if the joint development agreement amended passes, then it would go to the full Wamata Board for consideration on November 21st. If the traffic study is not completed, presumably the amended joint development agreement would be deferred further. As everyone knows, I've been collaborating with ANC Commissioner Sarah Green, who's present, also with ANC Commissioner Faith Wheeler, and with a group of community members who frankly have self-selected and been invited, but who are people who have a deep interest in this project and the capacity to contribute to community activities. I think the total count is 23 on the email exchanges that we've been having. The members of this group have further been petitioning, collecting signatures of people who endorse certain principles regarding the Tacoma project. So, when I speak, and what I have put down in paper reflects my understanding of the, essentially the consensus opinion, not a major, I'm sorry, not a absolute 100% opinion, but the consensus opinion of community members on both sides in DC and in Maryland. It's not going to represent everyone. In any case, I did prepare notes that are mine. These notes are designed in a way that they can be included into a resolution, and I would ask the council tonight to consider moving forward with the points that I have here. I don't mean to 100% dominate the discussion or anything like that, but I have spent a lot of time thinking about this stuff. These notes were put together in a narrative form that would be suitable for testimony at this week's Wamata Board meeting. That's why they're in this form. I think they're more readable this way. So, I will, I will go through these points, but I'll introduce them by saying that the community consensus is that the current proposed project is overly large for the site in terms of its neighborhood impact. In terms of other considerations, it is also flawed regarding the transit considerations. So, I'll talk about that stuff. So, I would hope that, again, that the Tacoma Park City Council will next week consider a resolution that would be addressed to Wamata's Board regarding consideration of the amended joint development agreement. I'll say one more thing about that. The, the Real Estate Committee was going to consider the amended joint development agreement at its October 10th meeting and deferred it because the traffic study is not completed yet. The packet there doesn't include the actual amended joint development agreement, so I've been using the phrase pig in a poke. We haven't seen it, so I can see no way that we could support it. In any case, I'm not ready to support it. The amended joint development agreement information packet that the Wamata Board Committee was considering does include an actual concept design put together by developer EYA in consultation with Wamata staff. So, specific design, a specific concept design is part of the amended joint development agreement. Therefore, my assertion is therefore, it should be a design that works, and the current design doesn't work. So, I've given printed copies of the handout to, thank you, City Clerk Carpenter for making the copies, to the people on the podium and then people who are interested in this topic in the audience tonight. We'll start off with that reassertion that the City of Tacoma Park does have strong standing here as a local jurisdiction as defined in the Wamata Compact. And I have bolded here that, while I don't have bolded a sentence, Wamata requires, this is Wamata's language, Wamata requires its elected developers to work with local jurisdictions throughout the joint development process. We are currently engaged in that process even though the amended joint development agreement has not yet come to a vote. We are in that process, but the developer EYA has not in any meaningful way worked with the City of Tacoma Park. So, that's point number one. Doing a presentation to the city council and meeting with one city council member is not a meaningful representation of work with a local jurisdiction that's concerned here. So, immediately, we're, we're not in compliance with Wamata's compact. Secondly, the pig in a poke reference, Wamata's a public body. It is responsible for financial return on its projects, and of course, transit considerations come first, other considerations such as safety. Wamata has before it an amended joint development agreement, amended because the previous joint development agreement expired. It is a no longer legally binding contract, so far as I know. Wamata does not wish to recompete the joint development agreement. Wamata wishes to continue working with the previously selected developer EYA. That's an interesting situation because normally, the way that one discovers the greatest financial return, as well as the best project, is by open public competition. Wamata Board, by voting for this amended joint development agreement, would be issuing open public competition that would assure the greatest financial return and the best project possible. We recognize Wamata has interests, reasons for avoiding competition. In exchange for our recognition that Wamata prefers not to recompete this thing, I think that the City of Tacoma Park should ask to see for public release of the amended joint development agreement. Anything truly sensitive can be redacted, but I'm not sure why anything should be redacted there, because this is essentially a project that's being handed to the developer EYA. So, the terms will eventually come out. They should come out before the vote. I would ask the City of Tacoma Park to include a, a strong request for public release of the amended joint development agreement with ample time for public comment by the city or anyone else who chooses to comment. Wamata's a public agency before the vote on the amended joint development agreement. There are, as I said, the design, the concept design created by EYA is incorporated in the amended joint development agreement by Wamata. I see that that concept design fails on a number of key points, safety, disabled access, conformance with transit-oriented development principles, and community compatibility. I will try to do this quickly. It's all in writing. First of all, a huge, completely glaring design element, there's a loading dock on this project that opens directly onto Eastern Avenue Northwest. Trash trucks would use that loading dock as well as other vehicles making deliveries. Because of the design of the loading dock, trash trucks and other vehicles will need to back across the sidewalk. That is a huge safety problem, so far as I'm concerned. I and Ms. Green and Ms. Wheeler have brought this to the attention of Jack Lester from EYA. He has not indicated that he's going to correct this in anything but what I call a hand-waving way. There's a safety hazard there, and it's not one that is going to be easy to fix by simply, say, moving the loading dock. It is large enough that there is going to be substantial redesign needed in order to fix this safety problem. Persons with disabilities use public transit, just like people without disabilities do. The current drop-off at the elevator entrance is very close to the elevator entrance. You've all probably used the elevator at the Tacoma Metro Station. The drop-off for persons with disabilities would now be moved, my, my guesstimate is a distance of two to three times greater from the elevator entrance. This is a degradation in the transit function of the site specifically regarding persons with disabilities. This should be noted, and it should be corrected by the developer EYA prior to the vote on the amended joint development agreement. Further transit-oriented development, this is supposed to drive people to use metro that would, and buses and rail, that would minimize the traffic impact on the surrounding neighborhood, the parking impact, all of that kind of stuff. But in particular, it's a revenue issue for Wamata. The developers actually increased the number of residential parking spaces since the presentation that we had here. They currently have 178 residential parking spaces for 212 apartment units, a 0.844 ratio. I've done a bit of research, although I'm no expert, that is a high ratio for residential parking for a residential facility with small apartments, people who are perhaps less likely to have vehicles. But in any case, if the parking is available, people, I would have to believe will use it. That is a high parking ratio for transit-oriented development for developments sighted directly adjacent to a metro site. I additionally note in my comments here that the parking is spread over four levels of residential parking, requiring lots of ramps that essentially waste space, and that wasted space comes at the expense of the people in the neighborhood, in particular because the building is too high. Every other building in the area that has gone up in recent years, the Gables, Cedar Crossing, elevation 314, the Tacoma Central Building that is currently being constructed near completion, the planned Spring Place Building, they're all four stories or fewer. This one would go up to a potentially height of six stories, seven if you're counting the levels. The building is at a grade, so seven or six, it depends on you, how you count it. I skipped one point, which is it, the design decreases the number of transit user parking spaces. This comes at a, potentially, it disfavors transit revenues. People who do feel they need to drive to the station because they have young kids or maybe are, have trouble walking greater distances and so on, will be less likely to use the station. So, that is a traffic, a transit impact that is negative that I would ask the city to address in a resolution. The building does not, as currently designed, does not fit with the neighborhood. EYA has said they will be reducing the height facing Eastern Avenue Northwest to three stories. It's really three stories. Well, one of them is a ground-level story that is extra height. It's not a normal height, so it's sort of three and a half stories really. But then, Jack Lester from EYA told us just a week ago that only 10 to, eight to 10 feet in, the building would step up to five stories. So, approximately 30 feet from Eastern Avenue, you'd have a five-story building. That is facing across the street from buildings, residential houses that are much smaller. The adjoining properties have apartment buildings that rise to two and a half to three stories. This building is out of scale with the neighborhood, and it is also out of scale in terms of its massing onto Eastern Avenue Northwest. And then, the last point I note in here is that the current design separates the residential building from the adjoining residential building by three traffic lanes to serve the parking plus nine feet of buffer. That is an affront, it is an insult to the people who live in the adjoining properties, and it's one that further emphasizes that this building as currently designed is not in tune with, with Tacoma. So, in summary, I would ask the city council to incorporate these points. Of course, we'll discuss them further, add to them, subtract to them as we agree, but in, in a resolution that is targeting the Wamata Board, asking them to hold off on a vote on the joint development agreement until serious design flaws, as well as procedural questions, including the release of a joint development agreement text, until that stuff happens. And the last thing I'll note here is that nothing I've said has questioned the idea of 212 apartment buildings. For some people, that's controversial. We, we, as a whole, welcome new neighbors to the Tacoma area. They will be patrons for the local businesses. In a properly designed building, they will use public transit. They will be out on the streets. That will make the streets safer and all that kind of stuff. For me, the question isn't the number of units, the question is the building. I believe that EYA has the capability of putting up a building that meets transit-oriented development guidelines without being an affront to the neighborhood that uses the space in an efficient way. And I will stop there and welcome any comments, corrections, but, but my request is that we do put forward a strong resolution. I'll say one more thing. I have been asked by certain community members to use the word oppose in here, which I haven't used, also to use the word delay in order to get time. These are things I would certainly consider, but what I'm really saying is that I've been asked by some community members to put forward something that's stronger than what I have here. Thank you.
Councilwoman Schultz.
I would just like to add some sort of ad hoc remarks to what, what we've just listened to, which, with which I really have no, no disagreement. And at the risk of repeating some of the stuff I said at last week's meeting, I have no problem with the number of units that are proposed or the, the total square footage that's, that's proposed, or, and I'm not as concerned about height. I think the height on the current proposal is in the long, wrong location. There's no need for having any structure at all adjacent to Eastern Avenue, from what I can tell. The whole thing can be pushed back and another floor added to, to the overall building. I think that even, from the developer's point of view, this is an inefficient design in terms of its internal functionality, in terms of elevator and its access, its primary entrance, and how automobiles access the building. And I guess my, my underlying concern is, is that EYA has come out this, this past week with some updated sketches that build on sketches that we saw earlier that were presented to the city council back, I guess, in July. And it, it doesn't look like it's, you know, going in the direction that we would want it to go with regard to the things that Councilmember Grimes just, just talked about. And to me, that sort of means that once that joint agreement gets signed, Wamata fully expects that the building that EYA is going to be proposing to be built there is going to look pretty much like the sketches that, that we're looking at. We're not going to, I think it's not reasonable to expect EYA to say, oh, now that we've signed the joint agreement and gotten that renewed, that we're going to go back to the drawing board and start all over again with some innovative, different innovative solutions. I think to the contrary, that's, that's what's going to happen. For example, some of the other concerns that I think need to be noted is that prominence is given in this design to the bus depot, all the bus bays. And those buses generate fumes and noise. Awful lot of the units, the lower, lower and upper level units face right onto that, onto that, that bus pickup and drop-off area where buses sit and run their engines and idle. that bus pickup and drop-off area where buses sit and run their engines and idle. There are a couple areas that are courtyards facing the bus area, and those low-level apartments will look, which will be, most of those courtyards will be in shadow most of the day except in the mornings. One of which is proposed to have a swimming pool in it, which will be in the shadow probably throughout most of the year by virtue of the way the building is angled and full of bus fumes. It's just, and so why would you put units on the bottom level? Why not raise the building so that the first level of the units is really on the second level and use the under, the lower level, put a platform over the buses so that their noise and fumes stay contained and have greenery and a green roof on that platform or so that there's a continuous green effect from the park all the way to the facade of the building? And the buses are under it with all their noise and their fumes. And so that the unit, the people that are going to rent these units aren't dealing with this craziness going on all day long for hours and hours on end. It just, I mean, if you want to rent units or sell them, as the case may be, the better the design, the more likely you are to sell them quickly or get them occupied and paying rent. And that's going to make the developer happy. It's also going to make the commercial lender who lends the money for this project a lot happier. I think the project fails from a lack of imagination. I don't know that EYA can't put together a much better design that works on that site. I think, I think any good architectural firm, which I assume EYA is, could do that, but I just don't see that they have any motivation at this point to deviate very much from the basic design that they have, which is kind of, you've got a large plat of land, and they've sort of decided to make squash this building down so that it spreads out all over it rather than use, take advantage of building some height adjacent to the railroad and metro tracks and taper it down quickly so that it has no impact on Eastern Avenue or on the green, or the park that's there. And in that way, they don't even have to ever need to take any portion of that park. What we, in other words, the park that we see is the park that we should continue to have. And I'm not saying that I have all the answers for this, but I think that there certainly could be some creative thinking going into this. And I think all the stakeholders vested in this, including EYA and WAMADA, all want to see a quality design that will not only be attractive, but will sell quickly and will be very compatible and pleasing to the eye to the surrounding community. And I think all that can be accomplished, but right now, I'm not seeing it heading in that direction. What action we should take here, I'll leave that up to all of us here on the dius to decide.
Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I joined my colleagues who just preceded me and say that I do support development on that site, but I think that the concept that we've seen has some gross problems as detailed by Councilmember Grimes and Councilmember Schultz. So I, I support a, an action that includes those comments. And I would just say to those who have said that this is the wrong time to do it, that we need to wait, I think we need to speak early and often until we can work together with the developers to, and with WAMADA, to end up with something that benefits our community and is an enhancement to the community and not a detriment. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels, go.
Thank you, Mayor. Notwithstanding everything else in Cess document, on page one, the design positions a loading dock whose use indicates, includes waste hauling that opens directly onto Eastern Avenue. The loading dock positioning means that vehicles, including waste hauling and delivery trucks, will back across this sidewalk. This design flaw creates a significant pedestrian safety hazard. Notwithstanding everything else that's in here, the building's too tall, it's too fat, it's too, whatever it is, this should be the doozy. I mean, you're going to have to drag back trash trucks over the sidewalk. Where does, where does Tom Perez live? In Ward 1, right?
Two.
No.
Two.
In Ward 2. Aha. And Roy Austin, who was his chief advisor, lives in Ward 3.
Deputy Attorney General.
So, I mean, these are people that need to know about this kind of a design flawed building. EYA, do they know, do they know how to design a building? I mean, this is a big square thing, you know? I'm sorry. They do know how to design a building, or it's a big square thing?
We're waiting.
That's, that's one side, but the other side is, I only hope that we have a lot of say-so in what goes on as a city. This is not our city. Unfortunately, BF Gilbert bought it, but it belongs to Washington, D.C., so.
WAMADA is yours.
So I just, I mean, maybe if you keep, if you don't give up, don't give up. Keep, sorry, Kathy. You keep hammering, it'll, they'll maybe sit up and listen. I mean, that may be the game plan. You can always send me in there. I can use my loud outdoor voice. Scary, very scary.
We have you on Thursday. We'd love to have you.
What time is it Thursday?
10 o'clock in the morning on Thursday.
Ah!
It's metro-accessible.
Wait a second.
Love to see you then. Love it.
Let me just say that I understand and agree with many of the comments that my colleagues have made about the inadequacy of this concept design. What I'm having a little trouble with is understanding first the, how the amended joint development agreement, how those things proceed. And I've heard calls for making it public and available for review. I've also heard people say that these kinds of agreements don't get released before they're voted on and signed. I would like any understanding that anybody can provide me about how these, these types of joint development agreements are usually processed. And I also find myself thinking, as people have talked about various design flaws in this concept design, wondering to what extent they are concerns that are WAMADA concerns and to what extent they are District of Columbia concerns as they go through their various reviews and processes. And my sense is that designs get changed through the planned unit development process, through the zoning, through historic review. So I'm wondering the applicability of these particular concerns at this particular point in time, wondering about the ears that they will fall on and what effect that might have.
Let me answer your first question. I'm Kathy Porter. I'm resident to Compaq on Elm Avenue. I also serve on the metro board as an alternate from Montgomery County. In terms of the joint development agreement, WAMADA traditionally does not release joint development agreements. I don't know why they couldn't, with the proviso that I'm not an attorney. I don't know why they couldn't, simply redacting the issues that are sensitive. As far as I know, the main issues that are sensitive are, have to do with price and conditions for, you know, payment and that kind of thing. I don't know why they couldn't. I can check and see if they will. As I said, I'm not an attorney, so there might be some legal issue that I'm not aware of. In terms of the comments, I guess in general, I would just encourage you to make whatever comments you would like to make as soon as you are able to make them. The process, it basically starts at a sort of a 30,000-foot level and works its way down to the details through the joint development process, the compact public hearing process, and then the, and then the PUD process, which occurs entirely within the District of Columbia. But I would encourage you, if you've got anything that you want to say, that you put that into the process as early as it's clear that you want to say it. I don't know that it could be too early. It might not be applicable to the particular stage that the process is already in, but it certainly wouldn't hurt. And, you know, if it comes up, if it's applicable later, you could say it again.
Do you, do you have any experience with similar types of agreements and developments that WAMADA is in the process of doing or has done? What I'm looking for is a little bit better understanding of the extent to which WAMADA concerns itself with the design details of the projects.
Well, I can tell you that in the time that I've been on the board, there has not been one exactly like this. And I would anticipate that this is going to be unique as it goes all the way through the process. So I, you know, I don't know that. Generally, WAMADA is most concerned at this point in the process with the price of the land that they're going to get. But that also, as Seth has pointed out, has other implications. It gives them a right to a certain number of square feet. And also, the developer, as a part of that, basically lays out the building as he sees fitting those square feet in there. There's the compact public hearing process, which is the next phase, which is primarily focused on the transit part of the project, you know, the flow and where the buses go and all that sort of thing. But I have been told by the general counsel's office that it can also look at, look at positioning and massing of the building at that point. The details of the development are supposed to be laid out in the, in the PUD process, the planned unit development process, which is a process entirely within Washington, D.C. Having said that, though, I would say that this is a unique process. This is far more, it involves far more sort of community input than most of the, of the joint development processes that I have seen at Metro. And so I really would encourage you to participate, you know, as much, say whatever you want as early as you are clear what you want to say.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, go ahead.
So from WAMADA's perspective, the design that EYA has given you, is that a concept or is that the building that you believe will be on that site?
It's intended to be a concept, but, but I don't remember who made the point, that generally, they're going to follow the concept they've got unless there's a reason for them not to.
That was me.
That was, okay, that was Fred.
Okay. And has anyone from the board said, we want this concept changed, or?
Or when would they say it?
Having not been through something like this before, I'm not sure I can give you a good answer to that question. As again, I would say, the earlier you get something to the board. The other thing, and, you know, just to be very frank with you all, the more information that comes from the, from the Tacoma Park City Council, the better position that puts me in, in terms of making a point, just.
So when, so when you're asked, what does Tacoma Park think, or what does Maryland think, you can say, well, I have this.
Yes, I have a piece.
In writing, I have these clear instructions.
Yes.
As, as, as an alternate, this is just purely asking about procedure, do you have the opportunity to speak, or are you, are you kind of put aside if the person that you're an alternate for is present? I mean, do you understand, I'm trying to understand, what level of conversation are you able to?
Alternates don't have a vote at the board meetings unless the board member to whom they're an alternate is not present. Alternates can speak, and alternates also have votes at the committee level, although this is not the committee that I am assigned to. I have sat in on the committee meetings, either because the person who was assigned to it wasn't there, or simply because, you know, I was interested in sitting in on the meetings.
Who is the person that is the, you're the alternate to?
I am the alternate. The voting person from Montgomery County is Mike Goldman.
Mike Goldman.
And he's relatively new?
He is brand-new. He's only been there for two or three months.
Montgoly.
And he, where does he live? In Montgomery County, like Germantown?
No, I think, I think he lives on the Bethesda side. I'm not sure exactly where.
Tacoma?
Somewhere in the, somewhere in the western side of the county. I'm sorry, I don't know.
Okay.
I have another question. The reason why the building is spread out, does that have to do with a height restriction?
I don't, I'm not sure I know the answer to that.
Ma'am, the, the building already is at odds with the zoning. The zoning of the site is split between a residential and a commercial. That's why they will have to seek a planned unit development, a PUD in the district. The, the reason the building is high is that WAMADA listened to community concerns and is taking far less of the green space. They are concentrating the development mostly on the currently paved surface. So if you want to get a certain number of units for revenue purposes and you cannot sprawl out wide, then you have to go higher is the logic. But there's no answer to that, for instance, why they don't go subgrade the way that, for instance, Tacoma Central went two levels below grade. And I don't know the status of some of the others.
In general, what I've been told on other developments is that going below ground is considerably more expensive.
Well, of course, that's the answer.
Okay. Thanks very much.
May I add quickly a few points? I did ask Stanley Wall, WAMADA executive, about release of the amended joint development agreement. He told me after it is enacted and then in redacted form, they would give it to us, but not before. So we already asked. Regarding, WAMADA controls and gets an easement for the transit functions. That includes the parking handicap drop-off, kiss-and-ride and stuff like that. And then the reason that I and others are bringing up all these design points now is, as I observed, the particular design, the concept design that EYA has, is included in the committee packet. I didn't put it there. WAMADA put it there. That puts this particular design on the table as part of the amended joint development agreement, and that would be confirmed by actually seeing the text rather than the packet.
I'd like to clear up a couple of things for you, if I might.
Yeah.
I'm an architect. I've been involved in development of many, many projects, many much bigger than this. What you're being shown in these drawings is not concept design. It's design development. It's the stage you're at right before you go into full construction documents. There's a specific grading plan shown on these drawings. There are specific heights, floor-to-floor, building heights shown on these drawings. There are specific unit layouts with square footage on each one for each of the apartment units. There are specific traffic patterns showing which lanes are one-way, which lanes are two-way, how wide are the lanes. There are specific locations of elevators. There are specific locations for taxi stands. There are specific sizes and locations of parking spaces within the parking garage and the direction of traffic within the parking garage. The sizes of the units, I mean, and the layouts of the units are very precise. And I'm not even sure, they don't even show the square footage of the floor plan, however, you can calculate it, which means if they're tied to 180,000 or 188,000 square feet, if that's part of the agreement, the building could get higher. It doesn't mean it's just going to be the number of height that they currently have, but it's certainly going to be the configuration and no less in height. So what is the reason to select EYA for this project? I ask you to just logically consider that for a minute. The reason is because this project is design-ready. It's designed-ready to go. And the quicker it can go, the quicker the return on investment to WAMADA. It's as simple as that.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels, go. Do you have another question?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I heard Kathy say we should get our information. Thank you, Mayor. I heard Kathy say, we should get our information in there as quickly as possible. Have we forwarded any of these emails to the Wamata Board, or to whomever, whomever's in charge of such things? This is a whole pile of emails.
Right, but what they want, what we have sent them so far is a letter with general comments. We have not sent them other people's emails. What I would expect that we would send to them are our comments.
Well, maybe we should send them all these comments, because there's a whole bunch of them here.
Well, then they're less likely to read them.
Huh?
Then they're less likely to read them.
You think so?
I know so.
Didn't you just say, the more they see, the better off we are, Major?
The more detail, not the more volume.
Did I not listen?
More detail, not more volume.
I think I would encourage any individual to correspond directly with Wamata. I think that's different from our sending a packet.
Right, because, I mean, there's, what, 30 or 35 emails in here? People who came and spoke, there's our notes. I mean, it's not a, you know, do they know how squawky we are about this? I mean, are they aware we're pretty squawky about it? Okay. Real squawky?
You're probably watching. You're probably watching.
Oh, okay. Goody.
I'm tempted to say, at this point, that it sounds like we should send them as much detail as possible, in terms of the points that we want to make. My sense is that my colleagues are in agreement with the points that Councilmember Grimes has made in what he gave us this evening, and what he walked us through. It may be that there are some additional points that we want to put these with from the draft resolution that we had, that staff provided. Do we want to take a couple of minutes and look at that, and see if there's anything in particular that we think works from that one as well? And that way, Councilmember Grimes, working with staff, could put together the draft this week.
Yes, I'd be quite happy to do that. You know, perhaps inclusion of a summary of the summaries would be appropriate, you know, giving stats on the number of people who testified and their key concerns.
Because I'm thinking that a number of these whereas clauses talk about past positions that the council has taken, about transit facilities, making sure that there are transit facilities now and into the future. That's a point we've been making over this whole process for as many years as I can remember. Pedestrian access, handicap access, compatibility with surroundings, talks about the hearings we had and the testimony that we had, talks about the traffic study being, not yet being complete, so that when it is complete, we might have additional comments. But since we haven't seen it, we can't have any comments at this point. So, using a number of these, in combination of Councilmember Grimes' points, I think would make for a overall resolution with a lot of meat to it.
I'd be pleased to work with staff to do it along the lines of what you're saying.
Comments from colleagues? Does that sound like what you want to see?
Yeah.
Head nods? Yes?
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
I would never argue with Mr. Grimes' words about it.
I would also suggest that you send copies of whatever you develop to the county council and the county executive, because they are, that's technically where the influence comes from.
Where, they, Wamata turns to them and says, or, do you have comments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm in the process of reaching out, in particular, to members of the Transportation and Environment Committee, among other topics on this one, but also some other things of interest to me, to keep them informed.
Who's on that one?
Hans Reimer. Roger Berliner is the chair, and...
It's all right.
Nancy Florine.
Nancy Florine, right. And I'll also mention, various of us have talked to Mark Elrich about this, who is ready to write a letter that I think we would consider helpful when we have room to.
Do we need anything else on this? Okay. So, you know? We're done.
Thank you.
Love it, love it, love it. Yep, yep, yep.
Did you watch your bike?
Of course.